Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
This meeting of the Exeter Planning Board of October 27th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the O'Leary Room. And start by introducing the members of the board. I'm Langdon Plummer, I'm Chair of the Board, and to my right is?
Pete Cameron.
Pete is, what position do you have, sir?
Clerk.
Clerk, clerk, not Clark, clerk. Okay, fine, and to my left?
Aaron Brown, Vice Chair.
Very good.
Gwen English, regular member.
And Nancy Valancher, Select Board Representative.
Okay. First of all, order of business is our minutes of October 13th, which we received in our packet. And I'd ask if there's any corrections or errors or notes, sir?
Not errors, but?
Oh, not errors.
I got a couple.
Clarifications, I guess.
After you, Gwen.
Nope, I'm?
Oh, Nancy, after the ladies.
I was just going to, on page three of five, line 114, it says identified, and that would be Nate Kelly.
Yes.
The identified individual.
All right, that was one of mine.
That is.
Gwen? She's happy? Okay.
Okay, a couple more. While we're on page three of five, line 92, I think that's Russ Hilliard as the attorney. And Attorney Nilson, I'm not sure, or Hilsen, I don't know who that is. This is line 92.
Yep, because 96 is Hilliard, now, okay.
There were two.
I think it's a?
There were two.
Was there another?
It was Hilsen, was Attorney Hilsen and Attorney Hilliard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm?
For each.
Yeah, Hilsen.
Hilsen was?
Represented.
Yeah.
No, 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 Hilsen was the other.
Public.
Okay.
Interested party.
Interested party.
All right, sorry.
The applicant was represented by Attorney Russ.
Yes. All right, then, let's revert back, then. No, you don't revert back, you just revert.
Thank you.
The line 61. Their letter registers their object, I think it's, we need to add an ION. So the word is objection.
Pete, while you're right there, can I ask you a question?
You may.
Do you read line 61? He'll pine, that's pretty nice, isn't it? You must appreciate.
Yes, I did. I expected that of you, however.
Did you tell someone to look at it?
All right, I think I had one more. No, I don't, that's it.
Okay, looking for motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
I assume that the, assumed the motion is to approve as with changes as noted. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any of those in favor, voice vote, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it? Thank you very much.
Can I just say that we're really lucky that Dan is doing these minutes? He does it, it's not an easy job.
No, it isn't.
I think he does a marvelous job.
Yeah, I think I concur.
When he wants to opine, we know he's putting some effort in.
I know, he's really?
He's really putting in the time.
He's done, he's done a great job.
Yes, whatever it is.
Needs a raise.
That's a hidden blessing.
Yeah, it is.
Absolutely right, thank you for pointing that out. Gwen?
Makes a big difference, actually.
Yeah.
New business, a public hearing application of Alex Ross/Ross Engineering LLC on behalf of Janie L. Richards for a lot line adjustment of common boundary between 14 Hobart Street and 16-18 Hobart Street. Sector properties located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel number 78-88, 74-88, and 74-89. Planning Board Case Number 22-16. Is this ready to be heard, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, and motion, please, to hear this case?
Sure, or yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
Moving second, those in favor?
Normal down there, isn't he?
By saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Dave, are you going to start us off? This is typically, you'll take your thunder away.
This is, um, it is pretty simple, so I'm probably going to say. The proposed lot line adjustment will allow conveyance of 27 acres of lot area from the, uh, and then that the LLC property would file with 80 acres parcel for Hobart. The applicant has said a lot line adjustment plan, October 7th, too. There was no PRC review, however, the business reviewed by the Code of Force Conference that these client, uh, they, and I did note that there was not monumentation needed at boundaries. Uh, but that's a statement. If you look at it, it's pretty simple, it has a little dock cut out right now, probably because of the sheds when we started, I would imagine.
Yep.
And then this kind of cleans it up. The shed is setback now, will be in the setback on the other side, but last of them.
Lot line, so Doug Eastman determined that, you know, you can make it less, as long as you make it more conforming, it wasn't in need for any zoning relief. And pretty straightforward, I am suggest, I do have suggested conditions of approval should the board decide to act tonight.
Thank you. What was yours, sir?
Great, thanks, Dave. For the record, I'm Alex Ross, Surveyor and Engineer, I prepared the plans. I'm also here with the owner, Dave. And, yeah, he pretty much covered everything, this is a really simple setup and?
You want to take your mic, the mic with you, just if you're going to go to the map?
That's so our friends at home will be able to hear you.
It should.
Just slide it right out toward you.
Along with us, and they can throw popcorn or tomatoes at the TV.
Right, right. Yeah, so as was stated earlier, this lot line has this odd kind of jog, you know? And you can see, we drew the setback lines, so right now, there's a setback line cutting through about 50% of the existing barn here, and about over three quarters of the shed on the north. So, you know, an odd configuration, and non-conforming in a lot of ways. So what we did is, we just shifted this line to the north.
Okay.
And by doing that, now the barn is totally in conformance with the setbacks. And just a very small triangle of the shed misses it. But this is a much cleaner configuration for a parcel, and brings it into almost total conformance. Of course, we meet the lot area, the front edge, everything else, so really a simple lot line adjustment.
Thank you, any questions? Don't all speak at once.
Seems rather straightforward.
Straightforward, yeah.
Let me open to the public. Those in the public, please, if you have a question, I'd ask you to step to the microphone and introduce yourselves so our viewers at home can, will know who you are. Any concerns or suggestions, thoughts, please step to the microphone. Seeing none, then I'll close the public portion of the session and bring it back to the board. Thank you for your cooperation.
Straightforward, very straightforward.
Very straightforward, yeah. I'm ready for motion if, unless there's something that we don't know needs to be discussed.
Well, don't we need Dave's, Dave's conditions?
Well, sure, Dave, have you got some conditions for us?
I have two conditions, the standard conditions we apply on all lot line adjustments. One, a DWG file of the plan shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines of monumentation prior to signing the final plans. This plan must be an NAD 1983 State Plan in New Hampshire, FIPS, 2800 feet coordinates. And two, all monumentation shall be set in accordance with Section 9.25 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to signing the final plan.
Okay, I'll move, if that's okay, Mr. Chair? I move to approve with the following condition, two conditions as stated by our town planner.
Are you moving the request of Alex Ross/Ross Engineering?
I, okay, you want me to read this?
Yes.
I move that the request of Alex Ross/Ross Engineering LLC, Planning Board Case 22-16 for lot line adjustment be approved with the following conditions, two conditions as stated by town planner.
Dave Sharp? Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gwen. Any discussion? Then I'll ask for a hand vote, or the right hand, please. Those in favor? Thank you, five. Those opposed, none, and no abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Dave has a, under other business? We have before us an agreement regarding the fire substation, and? So I would bring, put that on the table. I think Dave is best prepared to explain this to us, we can read, but?
Mr. Chairman, I must recuse myself since I live in Riverwood.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I continue to sit here.
You may sit there.
Thank you. I won't say a word.
Okay. You may comment as a public. Because you're the public.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you, yes. To give you some background on this, I've been working with the police chief and the fire chief and the town manager and the facilities advisory committee and the select board and others on a new, on what to do with the public safety complex. The existing public safety complex is numerous deficiencies, space needs, and so forth. So I started working on it, and we did several pretty comprehensive studies on operation staffing analysis, facilities, we did an evaluation of site options, and the outcome, and I'm not going to get into all that, you could watch the select board meeting from Monday night, and we gave a whole spiel on the entire project. But out of that was recommended that the town pursue a fire substation and new police station at our parcel, our town-owned parcel, at 6 Continental Drive. So I would suspect, you know, at this point, my, you know, no one's made any votes yet, but the select board appears to support moving forward with a warrant article to the voters in March to construct a fire substation and new police station at 6 Continental Drive. And during those numerous studies, there was really no mention of any, you know, looking at Riverwoods or that area of town for a fire substation. And then I became aware of some funding that we had in finance that Ross, I believe, mentioned it to me, he's like, you know, I think we might have some money for something from Riverwoods for, you know, a substation. So I looked into it and I found out that in 2008, I think it was 2008, yeah, 2008, the app, the Riverwoods came before this board, and they placed a condition upon the approval that said, "Applicant to provide an agreement between the Town of Exeter and Riverwoods Company that details contributions to the Fire Department's substation, including land, assistance with architectural drawing, survey, and engineering, and a contribution to the fund for the building." And I, I mean, I raised an eyebrow at this condition because it's not specific. I mean, we don't, we don't even like saying, you know, we say how many trees you should put in. This, this, this didn't say any monetary figure, it just said some contribution. It didn't dictate any type of land, but said some agreement. So then what happened, and I don't know who negotiated this agreement, but somebody from the town must have worked with Riverwoods, and there was an agreement drafted that I did provide a copy, but it was never signed. So we don't have an executed, um, for what it's, you know, for what that's worth. Anyway, the agreement, the unsigned agreement I have, the Riverwoods agreed to provide the town with $150,000 monetary contribution and identified approximately about 20,000, you know, or less than a half an acre of land right at the corner of Route 111 and White Oak Drive, to provide an area for this substation. Those were kind of the two components of the, of the approval. And I reached out to Riverwoods and asked them before I came here, because I wanted to see if they would even be interested in doing this first. I reached, I reached out to Riverwoods, Riverwoods didn't reach out to the town. I reached out to them, and I talked to their chief financial officer and asked them if, if, would they be willing to entertain allowing us to use the $150,000 that they donated, that they contributed to the town for a fire substation, for the fire substation that we're contemplating actually building? Because otherwise, we will just keep that $150,000 and never be able to spend it unless it is on specifically on a fire substation at their land. 20,000 square feet isn't really too much for a fire substation. I mean, maybe it was contemplated as an EMS where you put like an ambulance or something, but certainly wouldn't accommodate a fire substation. I mean, it could, it could, but there's no really interest in the town to do that. So here we are, we have, you know, land agreed to be conveyed to us. There has never been any conveyance, nothing was, and then the agreement was unsigned. So I thought it would, it would be a win-win situation if we were able to utilize those, if they were agreed to utilize the funds, and then we could explore, the planning board would explore, foregoing the condition to get the land for a facility that we have no intention of building, and then we can use those funds on a project that we, that we'd like to. They, they agreed to do that, they came back and said, yeah, we are willing to do that. And they even went a little bit further to say, you can, you know, you're free to use it. You know, the town agrees that the $150,000 payment previously made to the town may remain with the town to offset costs related to fire station needs. So they kind of broadened it, so in the event the warrant article goes forward and doesn't pass, we would, we could still use those funds for fire station needs, which there are many, and we'd be able to utilize those funds. Right now, I don't foresee us using those funds at any time, and, you know, for decades. I mean, if that, you know, if, if at all. So I thought it was a good situation, so we, since it was tied in to the planning board, even though you really didn't dictate what, what the parameters would be, we come, you know, I'm coming to you and, you know, and Riverwoods is requesting that the board would make such an, you know, be willing to make such an amendment to forego any land from them and allow us to use the funds for a fire substation of our fire station needs.
And the town forgoes any claims to land?
Correct, so, yeah.
They do have a little concept on the unsigned. In terms of the, it's pretty small, the structure, it's like they were talking about.
Apparatus and an ambulance, really, yeah.
Five thousand square foot building.
Well, my take on it is?
It seems like a win-win.
It does, I think it, you know, I'm a big picture guy. I think it would be better serving, serving the intent of the funding for fire protection for the town.
No strings attached.
No strings attached, and use it for that purpose, so I think it's a brilliant idea.
It's interesting that in looking at the conceptual plan, that we never? Well, it was never signed, but we never even considered this. I think, I don't know if, when was the, when was this all proposed? Was it, was that when?
It was, the decision was made in May 8th, 2008, by the planning board.
So that was that? I don't remember the timeline for the woods and boulders, so I'm just surprised.
This was the boulders.
It was the boulders.
This was the boulders.
I'm kind of surprised that, well, and then when they put in their office building and the park, I mean, this is all?
Yeah.
This is kind of built on redesigned and repurposed now, anyway.
Yeah.
This area where they've, where they've, so I don't, I mean, as you said, it was never, it was never signed, so there was never enough?
It was conceptual at the board level.
Right.
We didn't have this much detail, yeah. And it made sense at the time.
Although it wasn't signed, yeah, and I do say that because like the agreement, but the condition, although vague, is valid and it does talk about land.
Right, okay.
So there's something there.
Something there.
Yeah, there's something there. But I agree with you, the agreement is, is not signed. But if there was any inclination to utilize it, then I think we wouldn't be having this discussion. But we just went through a whole public safety complex, evaluation of site options, heat analysis, we did a heat map of response times and where we could strategically locate a substation to, you know, kind of get as close we can to the four-minute, you know, response time national standard. And this wasn't it, I mean, this area is not it, so.
Well, and I would further, Dave, that in reality, that condition on approval of a project is not a standard condition.
No.
And it was never done. So whatever concerns were brought up and the board was trying to handle by maybe pushing for this substation if necessary, clearly didn't adhere. The condition, I would argue, was onerous on the applicant as time played out. So to me, if they're willing to still allow the town to utilize that 150 boards, the needs that it was put there for in the first place, that's, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a win-win.
I agree, I used that word when they responded yes to them, I said, I think that's generous. They could say no, we could pursue, you know, we got some, we got some teeth in it too, but it's just, it's kind of, it was done kind of messy.
Right.
It didn't say an amount.
Played out to not be necessary directly to that project.
And the agreement never came back to the planning board either.
Right, no, yeah.
So you weren't even involved in the contribution of the land and the, and the, you know, and this, in this agreement that I know of, that I could, I didn't find any record of that, so. It's just, it just cleans up, I think it also cleans, cleans it up.
So would you be looking for motion that we accept this?
Accept the request.
Accept the request.
Yeah, and, and which, you know, the, the no further need for a commitment from Riverwoods to provide land for a substation in the town, and, and they further agree that the $150,000 payment previously made to the town may remain with the town to offset costs related to fire station needs.
Have you already, have you already written it?
No, I just underlined it, that's?
Okay.
You could say so moved.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we accept the gift as, and use what town planner, Dave Sharple's just said, is that acceptable?
As outlined by the town planner.
As outlined by the town planner, how's that?
Okay, very good.
Modify the agreement.
Okay, is that good enough?
Wait, wait, as a member of the public?
Oh, excuse me, get open to the public. Would you like to step to the microphone, sir?
No, I'm going to refrain from commenting here.
Thank you, okay.
To move things, to move things along.
I respect you, but you're, you're done.
Back, sit over there.
That was my quickest, quickest public appearance ever.
So is there a motion?
We have a motion, I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Being a motion, let's use the right hands to vote in favor. Those opposed, abstentions, motion carries? You're all set, Mr. Sharple's?
Thank you.
Thank you for your thoroughness and studying, getting this thing figured out.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a win for the, I mean, if we do, it's a win for the taxpayers, we get to use the funds that we have.
Yes.
150 has turned into 150, $1,480, so we get a little bit more with interest over the, I mean, we've been using, what, 12 years, and we have no intention of using it in the next 12, so.
It was nice to give, it was nice to allow.
At this point, I'm going to welcome?
For them to allow us to use it.
I'm going to welcome board member Pete back. So he's acting again. Uh, let's see, any?
What, may, Mr. Chairman, may I have that motion read again, please?
Yes, Dave, you got your notes?
I'm sorry to do that, but I wanted to be sure that I understood exactly.
No, you're right.
The motion was made to modify the agreement. So there is? That's what I would thought, modify the agreement, what agreement are we, are you all?
Really modifying a condition.
What did you just modify? Agreement air quotes, I mean, we're assuming that the agreement is valid.
But you're modifying the order. You're modifying the approval, I believe.
Condition.
The condition.
Of approval. That's really what's being modified.
That's what I was afraid of, that.
You're right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, I think that intent was clear.
Yeah.
I think it's good.
In our discussion, we talked about the condition. I definitely opine on the condition. That I didn't think it was reasonable. It has time played out. I thought it was onerous on the applicant. As time played out and there was no need. Or now even further plans for a substation on that site.
At that site, yeah.
Fourteen years later, nobody has a crystal ball, but.
Whether anything else might go at that site, that's another issue.
Right, that's right.
Which is not before us at this point in time.
Correct, yeah.
The.
Do you think we need to redo it?
Do you want to redo it?
I mean, you could say.
Because I'm, I'm afraid this.
Modify the planning board con- ish.
Why didn't he say that when he's part of the public?
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, wait, he's still done.
See what happens when you get off the board for one hearing?
For five minutes.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, while Dave is rewriting a suggested motion, do we withdraw our motion?
To reopen the case?
Okay, I, I'm just, that's why I'm asking him, Aaron, so we can get that done while he's writing.
Sure.
Yeah, reopen the case?
Reopen the case and reconsider the motion, yeah.
Motion, yeah.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to have done that, but I think.
No, no, we appreciate that.
And, and when we start down the road here, this is going to be somewhat important.
Well. I hear you.
You're hearing it?
And, and, yeah, we no need to.
Opine.
If we are clear at this point is going to help out.
Well, and we appreciate that. But this, this, this will have, this, this, what we've done, what you all have done tonight will play a role.
Yes. Some kind of.
You're gonna make a, um, I'm not sure, do you need a motion to open it up again?
It really wasn't, you didn't open up it.
We voted and we.
Voted and I.
Voted and we.
And I.
Gavelled it as fast.
Nancy just needs to retract her.
I will resent my motion.
Motion and I.
That's the way to do it.
Thank you. That's where I was getting, looking for guidance.
Yeah.
I'll resent your.
Yes.
That's the way to do it.
All right. So we're. We're back. Rehearing.
We're rehearing.
The matter.
Well, so everything I said and everybody, what everyone else said is in the record for this new rehearing.
Yeah.
So now we've put everything we've said before, so we don't have to say it again.
Yeah.
Right.
And all I did by, I just added modify the planning board condition and agreement. So there's no further need for a commitment from Riverwoods to provide land. And Riverwood agrees that the hundred and fifty thousand payment previously made to the town may remain with the town to offset costs related to fire station need.
Can I just add payment with interest? Sorry.
Well, but it's.
And I will move that.
Excuse me, I have the same, I have the same problem.
Okay.
It's you refer to an agreement that really was never an agreement. This thing is not an agreement.
We're not talking about that thing.
It's never signed.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about, he said the condition of planning board approval.
And.
And agreement. Well, there was some kind of meeting of the minds or we wouldn't be sitting on a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, exactly, exactly. So, and, and I don't know, I can't tell you, I can tell you that I only have an agreement signed by the town manager. I can't tell you that an agreement doesn't exist out there with both signatures. I don't know that. Maybe it does.
Right.
Maybe Riverwoods has it. Maybe it's somewhere that we can't find it.
Right.
So I'm not saying, I can't say there is an agreement. I just mentioned, all I have, all I can find is an agreement with only one signature on it that's not fully excellent. An unsigned agreement by River.
But we do know the Riverwood issued a check to the town.
We do. So I'm assuming that agreement does exist somewhere.
Yeah.
So it doesn't hurt to put it into the, to the condition.
And.
Or the motion.
There's no.
Should we clarify more?
Yeah, is there a date?
An agreement, be it signed or unsigned?
I don't think so.
Either, I think.
I'm not sure. Don't capitalize the word agreement.
I did not. It was small.
Lowercase and that'll solve the problem.
Yeah.
I did have it as small.
A concept, not a document.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
About that.
How's that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I think what, what I'm looking for, that, what I've heard, I think satisfies it. What I will do is we will work with them to maybe get a new agreement. Or an agreement, however it works out, to fulfill the condition.
Would you be able to add something, right?
Understanding.
Well, no, the condition, the condition says an agreement and we're, we're keeping with that. We're just going to amend or create a new agreement consistent with what the board just motioned. That there is, we remove the land from the prior condition and the hundred and fifty thousand plus interest can be used for fire station. I'm good. I think I'm good on.
So I have a new motion.
Nancy made it.
I think.
I did, but just added the word interest with a hundred and fifty thousand.
Between payment and previously.
I saw that.
Acrued interest.
Right, I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. I'm going to call for a vote again. Those in favor, please use your left hand.
Oh, it's like Simon says in here.
Okay, opposition? I still was opposed. Extentions?
It carries.
Motion carries.
It is like something.
We believe it's gonna hold water. Thank you, Pete.
All right.
All right, moving along. Master plan discussion, if any?
Not at this time. I think you folks, what we're doing with the master plan oversight committee, we had the same presentation we gave to the board, a little bit more in depth. So you know everything, kind of what's going on. Uh also, I don't know if it was mentioned. At the planning board meeting, but in part two, we're looking, I think it was, if it wasn't, maybe it was in another meeting. Anyway. We're looking at floodplain ordinance, the RPC offered some assistance.
Okay.
A grant assistance and Kristen Murphy, our conservation and sustainability planner is working with them to look at and basically look into increase the free board, uh the free board requirement. Due to, you know, anticipated sea level rise. Like a lot of our neighboring communities have done, well, not a lot, but some of our neighboring communities, Portsmouth, I believe, is done a handful, sunny, you know, just. Is it, it, it's just adds like a foot to the, you know, I think it's now it's a foot, a lot of communities are going to two feet. What only new, it doesn't affect anything existing, you know, you can, you can, until you either build something new or you improve your property by, I think, fifty percent according to the flood. FEMA flood, flood regs, so. Then you'd have to meet that, but it, it adds a foot to that. That's what we're considering.
Yeah.
At least, you know, it, it's not a big effect in Exeter because we're fortunate, even the, you know, the worst case sea level rise scenarios. I mean, there is, you know, concern, um but it's not like that, you know, we're not like some of our neighbors. Where most of the land that gets inundated under the even worse case scenario is under conservation, is conservation land, is protected somehow. You know, between a railroad and a thing, it's all wet, so it's not going to be developed. I mean, there are some issues with the downtown here a little bit. Out, you know, the kind of the behind Portsmouth Ave there around Wheelwright Creek and so forth. So there is some, some areas of concern, but fortunately, we're, we're pretty good in that. Because a lot of the land is undeveloped and won't.
Dave, I think in the conversation somewhere, there was about, something about trying to get a public meeting. And I know the timeline was a little tight, you know, for, for guessing on that. Some public input?
On.
On the, this concept of.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, we're, we're on track with that. I mean, we're looking, it's probably gonna be. Yeah, it's probably gonna be, you know, sometime in November. I just got a long email from Hozley Witten today. We're working on to figure it out. Our last day to have the first public hearing for a zoning ordinance this year is January.
Okay.
The first public. So I think we got time. We get a couple, two and a half months or so to work on it. So we're, we're figuring that out.
Yep. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Field modification?
None requested, but I have a, just run something by you. Um, there's a, really don't, I don't want to get into too much detail, but of like where it is and so forth. But, you know, someone, someone mentioned, brought up some issues with a project, you know, and, and I went out there. Um, and there was like, I mean, it was like, you know, grading was, you know, minorly changed. Uh, uh height of a retaining wall, you know, like it, and, and the great, the final grading on the plans was a little bit different than what they did. Uh, minor. And really it was to do with the retaining wall, to kind of grade it in smooth to get the retaining wall, to keep it at the height that was on the plans. There was another area where, you know, like they had planted twenty-five trees, they planted thirty-four trees. But maybe not in the exact locations, but pretty much met the intent. There were a lot of small things. And I never brought those, I never bring those to the board because they happen pretty much on every project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, like grades change, finished floor elevations change, I mean, you know, uh but this person was like, no, 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 it's, you know, it's, everything's exact. And I was comfortable, oh, and the other thing was the sidewalk width included, the width included the six inch curb. And one detail actually showed that the, the planning board approved included the six inch curb for the, for the hole width. But then there was another detail that contradicted it and said it, it, you know, it was that plus that. I didn't have necessarily an issue with any of those. Those are pretty common that I see and I didn't see any issue with. But I was, I just kind of wanted your thoughts on those. And, and maybe if you want more clarity, I could write something up for next meeting. I mean, it's no rush. And put it down, but I just, you know, I just wanted to be clear with the board because I, you know, if this person, you know, says, oh, comes, you know, I just, I was like, okay, I, they don't seem. They seem like as-built type issues to me. You know, you get an as-built and as long as the intent is met, I guess I don't hold it to that.
Yeah, Dave, I would say, uh, on those specifics, I don't remember ever discussing width sidewalk.
Well, you did. There was a.
Really?
There was a waiver to reduce the sidewalk width to four feet.
Okay, well, if they get it, if they ask for a waiver, yes, but in general, I don't think we'd spend any time, other than we've tried to have sidewalks put in in certain areas of town, right? The master plan walkability intent.
Yep.
Um, and in terms of trees, number and lo, and locations and species maybe, um we do spend. Time on that. Uh we have, you know, Jen and Gwen who are very attuned to species and locations. Um, but I guess it would probably be case by case on that, but if they're exceeding the number required, that's, seems like a step in the right direction.
Seems like a game.
Conceptually to me, for what we usually try to do is get them to put in more than maybe they're thinking about when we start, right?
Yeah, yeah, they created more. There was this one section down in one spot where there's supposed to be like a berm that was built in five trees. And two, there was three and then two.
Mm-hmm.
And what got built was a berm with four across it. There really wasn't room for five.
Yeah.
And the fifth one is, you know, there's actually just plenty of trees, but then I went and went to the butter that was the only person that would have been affected and they're fine with it.
Yeah.
So I was like, hey, if you know, you want a fifth tree here, and they, they called me back and said, ah, you know, I'm fine. I mean, you can't even see it anyway and they have, you know, so they were okay with it. So I'm like, okay, it, I mean, but I wanted the board's opinion.
Well, as long as they're not trying to pull a fast one on us.
Oh, absolutely not.
You know what I mean?
No.
I've always been really comfortable with your judgment.
You know, that's our concern.
I think your judgment in the field is extremely knowledgeable and practical and fair. And you have a pretty good sense of this board, so. If you saw a requirement and you're like, oh no, I remember there was a lot of dialogue about that landscape plan.
Yeah.
They really should be on top of that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, yeah, but it's almost like, it's, it's like, you know, yeah, the fifth tree is easy, but like, you know, the final grading is.
Right.
It's almost like, how do you even, you know, you.
Practical thing.
You can't even really tell like how, oh, it should be wider. Okay, yeah, okay, I see the, you know, but it, it just, it seems like. A lot of times, you know, if it meets the intent.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because everything, every little grade line out there, people aren't staking these grade lines out and grading them that. They grade, they kind of grade it to what makes sense when they're on, because engineers do the plan at, at a desk, you know, not in the field. And then you can run into ledge and you know, you're like, okay, I'm not going down anymore. I'm gonna, you know, have more cut, you know, have, have more fill than cut, like fill in this area to rise it up to this level. And because I was gonna cut it over here and, you know, things that kind of, the whole elevations of things change, not dramatically, you know? Oh, and um.
You call it inconsequential.
Yeah, well, okay, good. And, oh, I got one more. I'm like Columbo, but. Well, the, the sidewalk was, was reduced and the planning board gave a waiver because it was, it was because of a buffer impact. Like to reduce the amount of buffer impacts because, you know, to, to, to now the sidewalk to four feet, thirty-six is ADA. One part of the plan said, you know, you, the planning board gave the waiver to go to four feet. You never articulated whether the curb was included or not, but one detail said it was and another detail said it wasn't. And someone could say, oh, the stricter shell control, but I, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, if for some reason, I mean, you know, you needed to put in another six inches, you could. But I didn't really see, I guess I didn't see the need. So, um and then the other, the last thing was, uh, there was an easement to, to a drainage structure. And. Uh. Structure, a, a structure kind of encroached a little, like a little, little corner of it, like approached into it, but they can keep the same width easement. Just instead of right here, you know, structure, this is the easement, like this, they're just moving the easement right there. So the intent, you know, the easement's still same width, same access, you know, it's just, it just moves slightly. Is that something that?
No, I, I'm inclined to think that, that this is, is, this is an example of things that we really don't need to have clutter. Well, I, the word clutter is not correct, but to take time, that's just my conclusion.
Oh, we have a professional with.
Yeah, that's right. Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, generally, no one calls, I don't think everyone, it comes to me as a concern like this. I see them in the field when I go out. And I just can say, okay, you know, the intent's met and I, so never even, you know.
Was it a concern of butter?
Yeah.
In a grand sense of the word.
In a grand sense of the word.
I don't know what project you're talking about, but I think I know, but.
So I don't, I don't, yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to get your thoughts. That's all I did, just, so just to, you know, just to get your thoughts and, okay.
And I, and I would say we could, I mean, sorry, Gwen, um that members of the public are always welcome to come to these meetings. And if they take issue with how we operate as a board and what we kind of delegate in certain cases to you. They can come and talk to us about. We're here and that's part of what these hearings are about. So if they think that's not proper, it should be do, 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 they can come here and talk to us and convince us.
Yeah, I just wanted to know your opinion because I didn't, I, I was like, I never really asked them that because I, I do that quite a bit, but you know, there's.
You do ask.
Minor things. Well, yeah, but there's a lot of, you know, things move around.
You do, but you've never done anything without us knowing it, really.
Yeah, anything big, yes, exactly, yeah. Okay, cool, thank you.
All right on, yep.
No performance guarantees. No performance guarantees or releases. I do have an announcement, though. Just you got, just wanted to point out, everyone got the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two letter by Jay Myers. From, oh, no, dear Jay, no, to Jay Myers from Joel Shander, Park Street, Exeter. They copied the planning board and I made sure it was in your packet. So I just wanted to make sure we.
Okay.
Everyone got that and was provided.
Familiar with this?
Hmm.
Situation that wants to speak at all about it?
I have no idea. I just, we received it. They copied the planning board and I sent it along.
Is that the one about the heritage?
Yeah, about the heritage.
So I can tell you, it was in the packet for the select board on Monday night.
Yeah.
And Julie Gilman is the select board rep for that. Committee, committee, um and it will be talked about at our next meeting, which was three weeks on Monday. I don't have the date in my head, but so we're gonna at least have a conversation to make sure everyone knows what. The status of things is and the timeline.
Yeah, this sounds like a pretty passionate letter.
It did to all of us, yes, on the select board too. So that's why we, we asked Julie to, to kind of come and, and actually I've been watching the meetings and taking some notes.
Right.
Yeah, and I believe you were copied on it because if any, if ever that a district like that was created, it, you play a role in creating it.
Yeah.
So.
It was mentioned in.
Yeah.
The May eighteenth, I think.
So I believe that's why, you know, that's, yeah, that's why you were copied on that. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing with us. We'll take a look at it. Okay, anything else to be conducted this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would we all please go to page three or five? Would we all please go to page three or five of the minutes we approved?
Uh, no way. That's going to take a minute because we threw those.
Oh, you throw them away already?
Get them on the floor behind you.
Yeah. Well, this has to do, well, I'll tell you what it is.
Well, that'd be good.
Vice Chair Brown motion to continue the hearing to November ten, twenty twenty two. For the benefit from advice of, I'm confused. This, we have a motion to continue to today. Do we need to have something to continue it further? I hate to bring this up.
Not today. Next month. November.
November.
We're still in October.
I beg your pardon.
You just lose a month? Did you just gain a month, Pete?
Hey, yes, I did. When you get, when you get, when you get ancient, they pass back.
Getting younger every day.
I'm, I'm sorry for that. I just read the date.
This is how we call life after eighty.
Yeah.
Is there? Yes, there is. All right.
Better to check.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Oh, certainly would.
I can atone for that. Couple of minutes. And I so moved.
Okay.
We go home.
An objection. Thank you very much for your time and.
Good.
The fine work our planning office does.
Absolutely.
This board is terrific.
Absolutely.
Is.
Second.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels ninety eight and twenty two. Channel ninety eight is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel twenty two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by S A U sixteen and can be found on channel thirteen with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.